Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the October 4th, 2016 Vista Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Bell, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with just one justice for all."
Thank you. Ms. Turley, can you take the roll, please?
Let the record show that all commissioners are present tonight.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you -- pardon me. Before you are the minutes from the September 20th Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Turley put on the dais some changes that she noted when -- after or when she was typing them, so if you could, whoever makes a motion, make sure that we have these changes in it. And are there any other changes that need to be made? Commissioner Garrettson, please.
I would move the acceptance of the minutes as revised.
Commissioner Jackal?
I second the motion with compliments to Ms. Turley for putting all these discussions together. It was remarkable.
Thank you. Please let the record show that the minutes passed as revised by all commissioners with Commissioner Kramer abstaining. Thank you. Right. Mr. Rossler, are there any agenda changes this evening?
No agenda changes tonight.
All right. First item that we will have were any oral communications for items that are not on this evening's agenda. And since I have no speaker slips of any kind from anybody, I'm assuming nobody wants to talk. So with that said, we've got two items before us, public hearing items. One of them is for an energy storage facility on Olive, and another is amendment to development code having to do with citywide parking. So with that said, do you want to get us started, Mr. Rossler?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The item before you tonight is a special use permit for the Vista Energy Storage Facility. The application number is P-16-0253. The project address is 552 Olive Avenue. The site is generally located southeast of the intersection of Olive Avenue and North Melrose Drive. The site is approximately .88 acres. It's one legal lot, and it's currently vacant land. Before you are two photographs of the site, as well as an aerial photograph. The photograph above is taken from Olive Avenue. The photograph below was taken physically onsite. Surrounding land uses includes the San Diego Gas and Electric Substation to the north, industrial development to the east, condominium development to the south, as well as commercial and single-family homes to the west. In terms of the general plan, the subject site maintains a land use designation of industrial general. allowable uses within this designation would be industrial uses as well as heavy manufacturing uses. In terms of zoning, the site maintains a zoning classification of M1, light manufacturing. Uses permitted within that designation include manufacturing, processing, as well as storage The project before you tonight includes a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan to construct and operate an energy storage facility. The facility has been designed to receive electrical energy during the low peak periods, store the electricity, and then discharge it during peak hour opportunities. This facility will be interconnected with the San Diego Gas and Electric Substation, which is directly north of the subject site. The facility has been designed to house lithium-ion batteries that will be connected to onsite outdoor electrical equipment. The facility itself would be unmanned and would be operated remotely, so there'll be no individual who's going to the site except for maintenance purposes and so forth. And the facility has been designed to provide for no emissions in terms of air and water. The special use permit request is due to the fact that energy self-storage use isn't identified within the zoning ordinance, therefore it's required to obtain a special use permit for this use, as well as the outdoor substation equipment exceeds the 35-foot height limitation for the M1 zone. The submitted site plan indicates there'll be two buildings constructed onsite. Each building would be 7,736 square feet. One building would be located directly along the Olive Avenue street frontage. The second building would be located towards the rear of the site. The site would also maintain an electrical substation, which would be located towards the center of the site, as well as power inverters and transformers that are located directly adjacent to the outdoor substation, as well as towards the rear of the site. Other site improvements include a 10-foot, 6-inch-tall security gate that would span across the main drive coming into the site, as well as a 24-foot-wide decomposed aggregate driveway, as well as a 6-foot-tall masonry wall that would be along property lines that abut residentially zoned properties as required by the zoning ordinance. In terms of the floor plan, the buildings would be designed to maintain two storage rooms, as well as a relay and communications room, again for a total square footage of 7,736 square feet. Architecturally, the proposed buildings would maintain a tan sheet metal exterior finish with a brown standing seam roof element. The front elevation of the northerly building facing Olive Avenue would be enhanced with a off-white stucco exterior finish and enhanced with three arched elements. The buildings themselves would maintain a total height of 24 feet. The electrical substation would maintain a height of 16 feet with the associated H-frame structure reaching a total height of 46 feet. Staff does want to notate that the only part of that structure that exceeds our code requirements would be 11-foot of lightning arrestor wires that extend from the H-frame up. So that would be the only part of that structure that would exceed our code requirements. In terms of landscaping, the front landscape setback along Olive Avenue would maintain landscaping. That would include 324-inch box crepe myrtle trees, as well as shrubs and ground cover. The remainder of the site would be surfaced with 3/4-inch drain rock gravel. In regards to the general plan, the proposed use is consistent with the IG industrial general designation. It is compatible with the existing anticipated future uses within the area. In terms of zoning, the project meets all applicable development standards for the M1 zone. It is consistent with other uses within the area. It operates without any emissions, and it also complies with the city's noise control ordinance. And finally, staff feels that there's adequate buffering and separation between the subject site and the surrounding residential uses. With that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan to construct and operate an energy storage facility at 552 Olive Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I am here to answer questions. The project applicant is here to answer questions and introduce themselves as well.
Okay. Do you have a presentation for us, or just going to answer questions if we have them?
We don't have a formal presentation. We're here to answer questions as they may arise.
Okay. Let's see what comes up. Don't go away. Commissioners, does anybody have questions of either staff or the applicant? Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, about 25. The danger of batteries exploding and creating a smell. If somebody could address that. I've had a car battery explode basically in my face. I wasn't injured, but -- so that immediately came to mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Cody Hill. I'm the energy storage manager for the applicant.
So your name again, please?
Cody Hill.
Thank you. And give your address, please.
So address is 5,000 Hopyard Road, Pleasanton, California. That's Suite 480, and zip code is 94588.
Thank you.
So yeah, that is, of course, the question, because everybody does have a car battery, and various people have had issues with them over time. This is a -- well, it is a battery. It's an electrochemical battery. It's a completely different technology, completely different class of technologies. And the one that we are proposing for this project is specifically a type of lithium-ion battery that is designed to be one of the safest, one of the longest-lasting batteries that is commercially available. The vendors for these types of batteries have exhaustively done safety testing. There are numerous levels of safety engineered into the batteries. There are fuses, there are contactors, there are sensors measuring all the pertinent technical specifications of the battery. So there's a lot of automated control. On top of that, there is fire suppression, should there be anything. But it's also worth noting that this particular class of lithium-ion batteries does not even propagate a flame. So if there is an external fire applied to one of these batteries, they won't burn. The flame will not transfer to adjacent batteries, so it's...
How old is this technology, and how many different locations is this type battery used?
Yeah, this particular technology, so lithium-ion batteries as a technology class have been around since 1990 approximately, of which there are many different kind of subcategories of the technology. This particular technology is -- it's a little over 10 years old in its current format, in the grid tied format, used in hundreds of locations worldwide for electric utility applications, mostly smaller scale than this. This is cutting-edge in its application, not so much in its technology. It's a mature technology being used at a larger scale for this utility application. In San Diego County, you can find this at UC San Diego. There are several megawatts of this tied to the grid as part of UCSD's microgrid. There's another similar project going in in Escondido. There are 1,300 megawatts, so over a billion dollars' worth expected to come online in California over the next five years.
Okay. Question two, and I'll just ask two at this point. The entrance, the driveway, is pretty close to that corner where the service station is right now. Is that where the entrance is going to remain?
That is the intended entrance, so I think on one of the slides we've got. Are you able to...
Yeah, I'll go back. That's probably -- we could probably use that. It's the existing driver approach that they'll be utilizing? Yeah, and then they'll be...
It's almost next to the exit from the service station.
That's absolutely correct. I guess do keep in mind the amount of traffic coming into this facility is limited. As of right now, their submittal indicated they'd have a maximum of one vehicle per week going into this facility, and that'd probably be substantially less, but the applicant could probably provide you more information on that. But basically, on the amount of traffic going in and out of this facility, the traffic engineer had no issues with the current configuration.
And what size vehicles will be going in? Are they 18-wheelers? Are they pickup trucks? Are they something in between?
Standard pickup truck, or like an electrician-type van, light automobiles.
And is there a place to turn once they're inside?
Yeah, the site plan shows a hammerhead for fire purposes, so it'd be easily accessible for something small like this.
Okay. That's only all I have at this point.
Yeah, just one note on that. The driveway is designed for the requirements of fire trucks, based on the pre-application meeting we had.
How many lithium-ion batteries will be at this site?
So the total number will be in the thousands. To put it into perspective, it will look like a data center, if you're familiar with that. So it'll be rows and rows. Each battery will be about server rack size, you know, more or less filling the buildings.
And the site is unmanned, correct?
Right. The site is unmanned. It is remotely operated, remotely monitored 24/7.
Okay. So tell us what safety mechanisms are in place should one of these batteries catch fire, because I'm guessing if one goes, they all go.
So to start with, if one goes, they do not all go.
Okay.
So that is a very important note to make. We've worked with several of the leading manufacturers and seen their test results. They have deliberately set these things on fire in the racked configuration in which they'll go into these buildings, and the fire does not propagate to adjacent batteries, even though it's a completely full rack. As far as the safety mechanisms go, the way to think about this is the large rack of batteries consists of trays of batteries, and each tray has lots of cells. And so the cells are not dissimilar from what you would find inside of a Tesla if you popped open the bottom of the Tesla and took a look at that. Each one of the cells itself, which is the basic unit of the batteries, does have several different safety devices built into it. These are, you know, not designed for portable applications, so they're not like the lightweight, cheapest form factor you'll find in consumer electronics. These things are designed for stationary installation. They have an overcharged safety device built into them. Each cell has a fuse built into it. The can itself that the cells are placed in has a crush protection, penetration protection that will effectively brick the battery rather than allow it to uncontrolled discharge should anything happen to it. Again, these will never be moved in their lifetime after their initial installation, so it's extremely unlikely, but those will all be there at the next level up. So each tray then has sensors monitoring voltage, current, and temperature of every battery in the system. That computerized sensor control system will be communicating to the master controller of each rack, as well as for the system as a whole. If any of those parameters are out of line, it will automatically open contactors, disconnecting those batteries from the system as a whole, also sending information back to the remote monitoring group. So that's the rack level. The rack level has DC contactors and additional redundant layer of fuses. And then on top of that, so you've got those two redundant layers, you also have fire suppression, which is not required by code, but which is, we think, the right thing to do, since this is, you know, in the city, you know, of Vista. So there will be an automated fire suppression system should these several layers all fail, which is supremely unlikely.
I'm guessing it's not an ABC-type fire extinguisher that would extinguish this if there were some kind of a fire?
That would work, although it's not the preference. So what this would be is a clean fire suppression agent. There's a number of commercially available types of this, so FM-200, there's DuPont Products, Novak 1230 is another one, if anyone's a chemical person. They're clean suppression agents. They do -- they're used in many, many applications for putting out fires in different electrical and critical infrastructure-type installations. You'll find them at a lot of cell towers, things like that. And you wouldn't want to -- you wouldn't want to put something out that has a lot of residue, so there's no residue from this stuff. FM-200 in particular is used as a propellant in asthma inhalers, so it's, you know, it's non-toxic. It's, you know, it's a very reasonable chemical for this. In addition, there is a city requirement, because of the size of the buildings, for there to be a sprinkler system. And so there's actually two fire suppression systems here. We would prefer not to douse the whole thing in water, but you absolutely can, and that would also be effective.
Transformers generally have a buzz, a hum.
They do.
Is this going to happen here, or does the building enclose the hum, you know?
Yeah, so as depicted, the transformers are outdoors. There will be a certain amount of electrical hum if you're standing close to it, but the intent of the design is to make sure everything is well within the decibel limits for the zoning.
Okay.
Staff notes that we do have a condition within the resolution that requires it to meet our ordinance, and they're also required to submit either documentation of the equipment or an acoustical report indicating that it meets our requirements as well.
Okay. Commissioner Rossler?
Thank you for the information on the safety. That answered half of my questions. Couple more, though. What's the life of the battery, and how do they get recycled?
So typical life, it depends a little bit among manufacturers. 20 years is increasingly the industry standard. So your top-tier manufacturers will be a 20-year, and there is a recycling ecosystem for these things. So at the end of life, you know, it would go back to the manufacturers. 20 years from now, it's hard to say exactly where the facility will be located, but it will go back to be recycled. And you can get all the metals out of these things. There's a lot of reusable material here, so they want the batteries back.
Okay. All right. And then how is the connection to STGNE made?
So the connection to STGNE is going to be an underground connection, so it's a medium voltage out of the Melrose Substation, essentially running along that fence line you can see on STGNE's property, and then underground to our project substation there in the middle of the lot.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Bell, please.
I think we've got the safety covered, at least partially. Tell us on why we want this. I don't think we heard enough from your company or about the technology in general, why we want this in our city, because it sounds like this is a pretty new technology for our size of town or our size of city to be putting in. So I don't know if you or someone else from your company wants to give us a two-minute pitch on how this benefits us, but I would give you the opportunity to do that now.
That's way more fun to talk about. No, I'm happy to, and if anyone else wants to jump in, too. So this is a more or less cutting-edge application of this technology, and it is -- it will be one of the largest systems of its type in a town of this size, you know, anywhere in the state of California at the time that it comes on. So the idea here is that battery energy storage has been something that, you know, engineers, utility people like myself have been wanting to do, but was cost prohibitive and nearly impossible to do for the longest time. And what's really opened this up is the electric vehicle market. So when you see that, you know, the BMW electric vehicles, the Tesla electric vehicles, these guys have really paved the way and gotten the industrial capacity that now this makes sense to, as opposed to building a diesel or a gas, you know, peaking power plant to deal with your summer power needs, those types of things, these big centralized systems and often ugly systems, you know, with smokestacks that you see if you drive up and down the coast. Instead, we can do a system like this. No air emissions, no water use for cooling, in order to provide the electrical energy to the users at a moment's notice. And so what this really does is it improves the local operation of the power grid, helps voltage, frequency, everything that San Diego Gas and Electric needs to do to manage all of their assets in the region, supports the transmission. In certain instances, could prevent local blackouts if there are issues coming from the Melrose Substation. This type of a system could mitigate that in real time. And what it really does in a big way is benefits the very solar-rich region that we're in, you know, with all the rooftop solar PV coming online, as well as all the big utility-scale PV out in the deserts. This type of a system is able to take advantage of that, you know, both store the low-cost or free, in some cases, energy from solar, as well as buffer out that intermittency, because when a cloud goes away, the generation drops, but you don't want your appliances to turn off. So this resource can provide that sort of a benefit in real time. So it's -- we really do think it's the future of this type of technology, and it's a lot better than building a gas peaking plant.
So the basic concept is, off-peak hours, this is actually building up energy, storing energy, and then during peak hours, if there's more demand than supply, this actually provides that extra bit of supply?
Absolutely. Yeah, 90% of the time, you'll see it doing just that, doing solar, in and out. And then it is also very fast responding, and so if there is any kind of event, like if somebody is driving down Olive Avenue and hits a pole with their car, this type of a resource could provide localized benefits to that instantaneously, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So is the power that you store, is it sold then back to STGNE?
So to STGNE or to the CAISO, so the California Independent System Operator that owns and operates the power grid.
Okay.
STGNE being the prime...
Got it. Commissioner Looney, please.
So Vista Energy Storage LLC is really a privately-owned company that is like a subcontractor or a consultant to STGNE, or to other utility companies?
Yeah, a supplier to the utility company, right. So they would enter the contract with us for the offtake of...
Okay. Is that the reason why it's on a separate parcel, rather than putting it on the parcel that the current substation is placed on?
Right, right. So if STGNE wanted to build this themselves, they would have potentially built it on the substation if they had room and everything. We are separate from STGNE, so it is separate, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And, excuse me, the site will not be gated in the front, so...
Will be.
Will be gated?
Yes.
Okay. Missed that part. Okay. Commissioner Garrettson, please.
Will it be remote video monitoring of this site?
Yes.
And tell me about the fences all around.
So you want to...
I was going to say, currently, there's between a five and a six-foot-tall chain-link fence that wraps around the entire site. The code currently requires that if there's an industrial use adjacent to residentially zoned property, there's a requirement of a 6-foot-high masonry wall separating the two uses. So they're proposing providing a 6-foot-high masonry wall along the southerly boundary and going north approximately 95 feet, and those would be the boundaries abutting residentially zoned properties. Keep in mind, there are two other residentially-developed properties. However, they're legal nonconforming because they maintain a commercial zoning designation. So ultimately, you'd be having a chain-link fence around the industrial, around the commercial, and you would have a 6-foot-high masonry wall surrounding the property from the residential.
So that would be complete on the southern side, would be a masonry fence?
That's correct.
And along the western side, up to what point? You said "nonconforming." You kind of lost me there.
Yeah, you know what? It goes up approximately 95 feet.
Where is it...
Here it is right here.
Relevant to the housing? There's some houses there.
Yeah, you do. So you have a single-family home on, I'm trying to see here, the 95-foot that it goes north along the west property line, that's a residential property. And going north from there, I think there's two legal nonconforming residential structures, and then it gets to two commercial, one commercial property and then the gas station on the corner.
But they're still residential properties?
They're residentially-developed, not residentially-zoned.
But there's still people living there?
You're absolutely correct.
And why are they in less danger than the rest of the people? From noise, from other things? There's a reason you're putting the fence around there.
Because ultimately, those properties are zoned residential. They'll stay residential. If they get redeveloped, they'd be redeveloped residentially. The properties I mentioned were nonconforming, so in the future, if they ever became redeveloped, they'd have to meet our current commercial standards to where residential uses would not be permitted.
So they could be subject to noise or whatever, that the other residents will not be because they're nonconforming? And that's okay?
The separation isn't required by code. That's correct. That's correct.
What, you can't build a wall up through all of those residents? I would be concerned about their safety.
I think it's more of a visual. I think that they've indicated there's no emissions or anything like that. There's adequate separation. I think there's approximately 95 feet from the residential property, or structure, excuse me, to the storage buildings themselves. So there is separation there. They are enclosed. It's a visual barrier, too, as well. So the six-foot-high wall creates a visual barrier from the residential properties to this facility here. And ultimately, yes, unfortunately, those properties are zoned currently commercial, so the requirement isn't there for it. It could be at the discretion of the Planning Commission to include that condition, but based on code requirements, it's not required.
Well, I would just be concerned about those residents, whether it's conforming or not. I don't know the history of how that happened, but I think we have an obligation to protect the residents. You know, they're living there. Why should we not expect to protect them? Do you have a response?
I'm not a fence expert. It is just for visual stuff, though. There's not a danger for any of these residents that we're protecting them from this.
But if there's a reason to put a solid fence to protect them from the visual impact of what they see, why does that change for these residents and not the others, not everybody? Just because it's nonconforming, there's still people living there.
Currently, or?
They have to look at this every day, whether it be transformers or?
Well, plus, you've got the transformers right next to the residential areas.
Actually, I think there's only a limited number. I think there's three. There's actually a 12-and-a-half-foot separation between that equipment to the west property line, but beyond that, it's the driveway going all the way north.
But we've got two, four, we've got six transformer pads.
Yeah, and I think three of them are shielded by the existing wall, and I think you might have three pads that are adjacent to the only residential property to the west. See if I can do this here. So you have these three pads here, and these four properties, this is the legal-conforming residential property here with the six-foot-high wall, and then you have three nonconforming residential properties. This would be the only property that would be impacted, I guess, visually. And there's a 12-and-a-half-foot separation, and I think the height of that unit is eight-foot-high. So realistically, there could be a 35-foot-tall industrial building built directly on the property line. So there is separation. Again, if it's at the discretion of the Planning Commission, if they want to do a condition that this wall get extended at least to this property here, again, this would be the only property affected. From here over is a 24-foot-wide driveway, as well as the additional separation to the building and to the transformer. But it is at the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
John, are you controlling the PowerPoint presentation? Could we go back to the architectural elevations, please? My only concern, the bottom elevation, is the east elevation of the north building, and that's what people are going to see as they drive down Olive Avenue going west. And I would prefer that that elevation matched the rest. I think you're doing it for fire protection. Commissioner Looney could probably tell us a lot more about that, but I have a problem with that elevation, and I would like to see it, as I said, match the other three.
The very bottom one, I think, is just the cross-section, actually. So Olive Avenue is the white on the top right with the trees. That's what faces Olive Avenue.
Commissioner Rosler, you're absolutely correct, though. This is the west elevation here. This would be facing, or, excuse me, that'd be the east elevation. You're absolutely correct. Both buildings will actually have the same elevation facing the adjacent industrial property. Currently, it has a stucco finish to it. This building maintains an H occupancy, which requires appropriate firewall along that property line. They were actually required, this is an old elevation, I apologize, but the elevations within your packet indicate that there's actually a 30-inch-tall parapet wall along this edge here to provide appropriate separation between this building and the adjacent property. So, but again, it is at the discretion of the Planning Commission. I'm not sure if the applicant's thought about alternative material that might be able to use in order to dress up maybe the front building possibly, but?
I'm not so concerned about the south building, but the north building, where it is visible from Olive Avenue, I do think we need to address that.
On the plans, you've got a three, sorry, you have a three-hour wall construction. So that three hour, is that required on the property line?
That's correct.
Because of zero setbacks?
That's absolutely correct. Because of the occupancy.
To get a three-hour firewall assembly on the property could become problematic, especially if you have any type of pitched roofs that are on the other elevations. It could be done, but, man, you've got to jump through a lot of hoops to make a three-hour assembly for a roof structure. But you're right, it is, it's a 22-foot, 6-inch-high blank wall.
In that neighborhood, I'm concerned about graffiti?
Yeah.
Canvas?
We do have a condition that identifies graffiti and requiring it to be removed within 48 hours of it being noticed. That's a standard condition that we do put in conditions like this. But, yeah, I understand the concerns of the Planning Commission. I'm not sure if there's ability to, I'm sorry?
That would have to be done from the rooftop. Otherwise, you're coming across on someone else's property.
Or you'd be going to somebody else's property and getting access.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bell?
To the city, so this is industrial zoned, right?
That's correct.
So the alternatives here, in general, could be a lot worse than a standalone building that doesn't emit any noise or very little noise or other emissions. Can you give us examples?
Yeah, I definitely can. We have manufacturing of electronics, household equipment, a laboratory, plastic productions, manufacturing of surgical equipment, tools. Yeah, there's a pretty heavy boiler shop, tin smith shop, welding shop. So, yes, it's pretty innocuous.
Big picture, it seems good. The view, I think it's from the south end of the lot where there's two-story condominiums, is that right? Is there anything taken into account from the second story of those condos as far as the view goes? Is there anything we can do? Because I noticed that they're high enough up that whatever's there, they're going to see. I don't know if there's any solution to, you don't want to block their view, but on the other hand?
Yeah, it's a little difficult. I know they wrapped the roof element around that south elevation, so they enhanced it as much as they could. The wall will help. You do notice within that 15-foot setback that there aren't any equipment or anything like that. Do note that the equipment is enclosed within cabinets that'll be painted to complement the buildings themselves. So they try to conceal the operations the best they can.
Okay.
But that's what staff was looking at. There's a parapet wall that's designed to screen all the mechanical equipment on the roof as well, so ultimately, we're trying to contain this facility the best we can.
And I'm guessing you don't have the answer, but I'm pretty sure if you talk to your group, that building a couple extra feet of wall wouldn't be the big hurdle here. I think that would probably be something you could deal with or at least talk about pretty easily. But we can talk about that at the end of the session. Thanks.
Commissioner Garretson?
Same general idea of those condominiums on the south side. Even though you're trying to block the mechanical equipment view, they're high enough to see all that mechanical equipment on the roof of this facility. And so are you planning on putting trees down there or something that would, that would kind of block that ugly view from the condominiums?
At this time, there isn't a plan to place anything there.
Okay.
There's nothing included in their application. That's correct. Again, it's unmanned, there's low maintenance. That's the reason why there's no landscape improvements or anything inside the facility. So at this point, no, there isn't any vegetation in the river.
Thank you.
But the buildings are colored, correct? There's some color to them?
Yeah.
Beige?
I think you can pass around, there's a sample board here that'll provide you a good example of what they're proposing.
I would venture to say that even seeing colors is better than looking at dirt and some of the other things that the residents in the condos have to look out, and the couch that's now turned over and... Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question regarding those arches on the front view, and are the inset's of those arches, I can't tell from the drawings, if the inset of those arches are a different color than the rest of the front of the building?
It's actually the same color. Same color of the building. It's just recessed in, which will frame the trees that they're planting out front. That was kind of the idea behind it. But it is the same color. We could condition an accent color if that was the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Well, it's recessed a foot, and I guess without a color differential, I'm not sure that you're getting maybe as much bang out of that as we could at that one-foot recess.
It might be just a couple shades darker to where it's not too much, but it's enough to where it accents that area, possibly.
Yeah, highlight the accent more without making you have to bump that in anymore. That would be my suggestion on that.
I like that idea, too, because the crepe myrtles are deciduous, so they'll, in the winter, they'll be bare. So at least there's a pop of color. Commissioners? Okay. Seeing no speaker slips, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll have the commissioner discussions.
Thank you.
I would agree with those who say this is a lot better than it could possibly be, but I want to make sure we make this project as good as it can be. And that's why I'm going to be insistent or moving that we extend that wall on the west side up to screen those houses, and that it be monitored, video-monitored. So?
Commissioner Looney?
A question for staff. Is there anything in the zoning ordinance or planning ordinance that prevents that wall, that masonry wall, to be increased in heights to six feet?
It's a minimum height requirement.
Okay, so if we've got transformers that are eight feet in height, I think if we can increase that wall, that masonry wall heights to six feet, at least it creates a little bit?
It is six.
Okay, so that's a change, because on the site plan, it says a five-foot-high wall.
Yeah, I think the chain link is, but the site plan, that's a setback of five feet. It says begin masonry, six-foot-high masonry wall along residentially zoned properties.
My error. Then the second point, could that wall be extended to the north, approximately to the edge of where the hammerhead turnaround ends on that south edge? It just gives it a little bit more sound barrier. Sound does kind of weird things, but if there's that six-foot wall, and if it's extended, coming back to what you were saying, it does begin to help us screen that residential property. I don't think there's a need to go any further north because the transformers are so far away. But I think with that immediate location, you know, here we've got our transformers, but if that masonry wall could just be extended maybe to that point, I think it's going to help the neighbors, I think it's going to help the residences just a little bit.
It looks on the plan that that is probably an additional 95 feet. It looks like that's the increment of that adjacent property, so that would extend it an additional 95 feet. So that's at the discretion of the Planning Commission if they choose to put that condition on the project, but?
Yeah, my concern is still the east elevation of the north building. If you look at the site plan, it says, it shows that the driveway going in is 24 feet wide. Since, usually, that 24 feet is for two 12-foot travel lanes. I think the building may be able to move over far enough so that there's a setback, so the three-hour fire condition is met, fire protection is met, or they can do additional architectural treatment to the building. But I definitely believe that that east elevation ought to be treated the same way as the other three elevations. So, and I give them all the flexibility and with the lane width, if they wanted to move the building over, set it back, or provide the additional protection.
And that's applicable to both buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Garretson?
Oh. I was just going to make a motion that we approve this pending any adjustments to the application, including the video remote monitoring and the fence extended northward to where the, past where the transformers are. The wall, I mean. But have that wall extended past where the transformers are, so they're screening the residents there.
So right now, I have the accent arches being enhanced with an alternative color, maybe a shade darker than the existing building. The block wall being extended an additional 95 foot north to protect that one resident, as well as the east elevation being enhanced with a material which might include setting the building back, whatever it takes to get that enhancement on that elevation, and video remote monitoring.
That would be my motion.
Commissioner Carroll?
I was just curious if staff or the applicant would have any comments you'd like to make about the possibility of the location of the building versus the need to upgrade the elevation?
Yes, my name's Kevin Johnson, again. The extension of the wall is fine. We understand that. The accent color you mentioned is fine. Adjusting the east elevation of that northerly building for appropriate consideration is fine. I'm a little concerned about, given the width of that road, which is dictated by fire code, that it be 24 feet wide. That was fairly detailed design to locate that building where we did, east and west, to accommodate the road and the access for fire protection. So, subject to that, we can certainly investigate it. I don't know the distance, right off the top of my head, of how far that building could be moved west.
Commissioner Looney?
Mr. Rosler, would it be feasible to do some architectural finestration on that east wall? Rather than moving or modifying that wall, what if we begin to just articulate it with some finestration? Maybe we introduce some color, maybe we introduce some shapes on, Olive, they've introduced the arches that are recessed. We could almost, the applicant could almost take and develop some architectural finestration where they maintain that three-hour wall, but it's not blank as it is being proposed. Just an option.
I think that the roof element that's on the other three sides would be important for the east elevation. I like the idea. I'm open to that, to provide some finestration to that elevation. But I think the roof structure is also an important element there, so.
I think the difficult part with that is, is providing that fire barrier per the occupancy. So I'm not sure if we'll be able to get that roof element there. I'm not sure. This is something that we'd have to work with our building official on to see what would be appropriate that can accommodate that occupancy. If it's at the discretion of the Planning Commission, we can craft a condition that indicates that we can work with the applicant to come up with a indicates that we can work with the applicant to come up with an alternative enhancement on that, on that side, which could include finessration, a different material, color, what have you, in order to enhance that elevation and meet the requirements of the building code.
Typically, there is a setback where that three-hour rating has to be protected. I don't know if it's five feet, I don't know if it's 10 feet, but it's almost as if we could take, if we lower the wall height, but still have that 30-inch parapet that gives us that firewall, and then begin a pitched roof, maybe it's five feet or whatever that zoning is for that particular regulation for setback, because if we, if we lower the wall, develop a pitched roof that's five or 10 feet back, whatever that line is where we don't have to have that three-hour wall, then you can begin to soften that edge and we don't have to have a three-hour rated roof.
Well, again, what we can do is we can work with the applicant and the building department. Ultimately, the goal of the planning commission is to provide somewhat of a setback along that edge in order to incorporate the, a roof element to complement the remainder of the building. We can work with the, the building department on that. I don't know what that separation is. To come, it comes to mind four to five feet, and I'm not sure what it is, but, you know, we'd have to talk to the building official on that, but.
But I think you've got an opportunity there that might work where you don't have to change the footprint.
Right.
But we might just need to modify that roof line where it begins, you maintain your three-hour, and we soften that east wall elevation to where it is more in keeping with what we have on the other three exposures.
That would be acceptable to me.
We'd be happy to do that, and I think getting that setback off the east property line, we may have enough room to move that building slightly and still meet the fire code for the access. I just can't tell off the top of my head.
Yep, fire departments, you can't fight them.
No.
You can fight them, but you will never win. But that just, maybe some wiggle room in there that makes it work.
We'd be happy to work with staff on that basis.
There is a little, looks like there's a little flexibility right in here.
Right.
So I don't know what that dimension is right now, but we might be able to utilize that by pulling that building back a little. Like I said, we'd have to, you know, confinement with the building official to confirm that, that it's acceptable with him as well as the fire department, but.
I think staff understands the concern and we've given them the flexibility to work with the applicant to solve it, so I, I'm comfortable with that.
Commissioner Carroll.
Withdrawing my request to speak.
I have a motion, I need a second. Commissioner Rossler.
Green's on. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioners, please vote. Please let the record show that the planning commission has accepted with the, the comments made and that you articulated for us, for your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see we have students. How about if we take five minutes and we can sign your, your completed things before we move on to item number two? All righty. Ms. Chow, will you lead us through P-16 dash 0008, Citywide Parking Regulations Comprehensive Update, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Chairman Kramer. Commissioners, Patsy Chow, City Planner, Deputy Director, Community Development Department. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present to you the update of our citywide parking regulations. So it's been a long process. We've started about a year ago, working with the parking consultant, Walker Parking Consultants, on this effort to update our citywide parking regs. Just to give you a little bit of background, I'm just going to rewind the tape here and for a couple of slides and then just kind of give you some information as to where we, where we have been. So we held a total of four community meetings workshops since November of last year. The last one was held in May with the city council, so we had meetings with the planning commission, with yourselves, with the city council, with the community at large. We gathered a lot of input and information throughout the meetings, and again, the last update that was done in the code was many, many years ago, so almost 20 years ago. Since then, many changes have occurred in the city of Vista throughout our community as far as development patterns and infill development opportunities. I mean, we're pretty much a built-out city, but obviously there's still a lot of activities and development opportunities that have taken place, and since the general plan got updated in 2012. We also, just to give you a little bit of information as to what happened at the February 2nd and the May 24th workshop with the city council and the discussion there, there were a lot of concerns that were raised with regards to parking for residential apartment complex projects, and also how to prevent parking problems associated with apartment complexes. It's been kind of a, a topic of the day. And we, the city council also talked about potential parking restrictions in downtown area, parking enforcement issues, code enforcement related to parking-related concerns, and also a lot of discussions surrounding mixed use and multifamily development parking ratios, as you have also raised in the past about the different parking ratios that are being utilized for residential-only projects in mixed-use zones. At the May 24th meeting, the city council actually directed staff and the consultant to pursue additional parking counts for additional apartment projects that currently exist in Vista. We had done a count for a total of five projects in Vista that are, been there for a long time, and so we wanted to kind of assess their parking conditions. So we added another four to the five. The consultant went ahead and did that, and we included the results of what that survey was about as part of the staff report under the exhibit three, which kind of actually supported their previous findings essentially. Didn't really change much from what they had found before with the five projects that they looked at. So as a result of compilation of looking at all these issues and the course of the, the last 12 months or so, then staff together with the consultants with, basically came up with recommendations that you are seeing here or will be seeing here tonight as far as parking ratios required by different types of land uses and some changes that are being proposed, along with some cleanup items in the actual ordinance. And those are contained in the exhibit A and the exhibit two in the staff report. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is we're going to talk about some of the, the recommended changes in the parking code, and staff's goal is to obviously obtain planning commission's recommendation so that we can take it forward to city council regarding what the amendments that are being proposed to the parking code. So here are the recommendations. We start with multifamily residential, where staff has heard from the community, from the city council, from the planning commission, the community at large, throughout all the different projects that have recently become before the planning commission about the parking ratios for multifamily projects, multifamily zones. So staff's recommendation at this point is to not change the current ratios for multifamily, the parking ratios for multifamily residential projects, which means that as they exist right now, they would apply both for rental, for apartment projects, as well as the attached for-sale type projects that would follow the same ratios as they exists, exist today. The particular parking ratios are listed again in exhibit A of exhibit one, but again, they're not changing from existing as staff is recommending right now. The big question is about mixed use, I'm sure as you have raised it in the past, about the fact that unintended consequences of residential-only projects in mixed-use zones utilizing the lower parking ratios. And there will be actually a discussion that will come before the planning commission on October the 18th, which will be discussing more that, all the different development standards in the mixed-use zone, including parking requirements. But the feeling at this point is that perhaps we would allow the current parking ratios in the existing, as they exist right now in the mixed-use zone, to be only used for true mixed-use projects that contain both uses residential and commercial uses on the same site. But more to come on that, so that'll be something that'll be discussed on October the 18th. And obviously, formal recommendations or amendments to the mixed-use zone overall as far as development standards, including parking, will come after the discussions with the planning commission and the city council. As far as commercial-type uses and the land uses in general related to commercial-type uses, the, there are reduced parking ratios that are being proposed and indicated in the staff report. They're being recommended by the parking consultant that after they studied our city as well as other North County cities such as Carlsbad, San Marcos, and Oceanside, and also according to their understanding of what these uses typically require, they recommended some of these ratios to be reduced to be able to further attract economic development in our city. The parking study has been introduced, as you might have been noticed in the matrix, the revisions, is that parking studies actually being introduced for several categories such as amusement centers, it could be like hospitals or institutions, where a parking study actually makes sense to allow for flexibility and also to allow for the applicant to create parking that is right-sized for their project, so that it's not just based on a particular formula, and they can prove it to us or based on other similar uses somewhere else where it makes more sense to have in a certain type of a ratio, rather than us demanding that it be a certain number just, you know, for not, you know, a good reason or something that is not applicable. So the parking study is being introduced to create that ability for them to, to do that, and also because the demand for these types of uses, according to discussions with the parking consultant, they can actually vary significantly for these types of land uses. In terms of the accessible parking for physically disabled persons, the commission had requested in the past that we separate the accessible required parking spaces from the total of the required regular spaces, because sometimes we ended up having less regular spaces available, and the fact that the accessible spaces might be not utilized to their full capacity all the time. And knowing that there were a lot of issues with, such as multifamily projects, then we felt that it would be appropriate to just separate them out and have it as, as a separate requirement, so. So they're not, one is not counting towards the total, or I should say, the accessible parking is not counting towards the total. There are also revised figures and tables, they're just being cleaned up, there are old references to old numbers, and some of them are hard to read, and just, you know, from 20 years ago, the, the technology was, you know, at the time that was available, didn't make it so that it would be looking friendly, I guess, to the reader. So we try to make it at least, not completely change it, but just kind of bring it up to date as much as we can and allow this to improve some of the, hopefully the readability in some of the numbers. Let's see here. In the next slide, I'm, I'm not going to go into each cell and what they say, and I don't want to bore you to, to the point of, you know, that we're all going to fall asleep here with the numbers, but just in general terms, what's happening is that this is really just a summary of all the different types of land uses that are actually changing, and the column to the, to the far right shows the net difference between what it is currently in our code. So for example, on the first commercial and retail, for instance, for banks, credit union, savings and loan, the revised parking or the proposed parking standard would be at 4.6 parking spaces for each 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, where currently the parking code calls for a total of five for each 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. So then you see the net reduction of negative 0.4. So the same idea kind of repeats itself, the same methodology or the reduction, I guess, how we're trying to show the difference for all of the ones that you see in negative decimals to, all the way to the far right. When you see a zero, for instance, on the institutional at the bottom of the matrix, that just means that we're actually introducing the parking study. So there's not really a difference in terms of the number itself, but just the fact that the, again, the consultant and having conversations with them is that this type of land use is the type of land use that can vary significantly, and therefore it does make sense that we should allow the applicant to produce a parking study if they choose to do so. So these changes, again, are based on Walker Parking Consultants, their recommendations working with staff, and again, based on typically recommended for this type of land use, and again, looking at what's been happening or what is happening in Vista. So this is just a continuation of the, the previous slide as far as the other uses that are getting changes. I should note, actually a correction on other self-storage units, where it says 3.0 for each 1,000 square feet of GFA plus .2 per thousand. Actually... Actually, the three is actually three parking spaces for the employees, and then we have the .2 per 1,000 square feet of storage area. It's not three per 1,000 square feet of GFA. So I apologize for the mistake, but the three is, is just a whole number for the entire project. And then also you have, or the parking study, which allows the flexibility there. On this particular slide, I just wanted to kind of recap the numbers because I know the numbers have been brought up in the past and sometimes, you know, even staff were going off of our memory as far as what the numbers are for existing parking ratios for multifamily projects, rental projects. So on the, kind of on the second column, you have the current city of Vista parking requirements for multifamily apartments, the, starting at 2.33 and again, 2.33, 2.5 for two-bedroom, a three for three-bedroom, and 3.5 for a four-bedroom. And the, I just put on the next column to add the, what the mixed-use zone requirements are, because I know that has been asked in the past, so just, just for comparison purposes. But on the third, on the fourth column, I should say, there is the recommended ratios for rental and then attached for sale that staff is recommending along with the consultant, which is, and I should say really more staff in this case, to just, just actually maintain as they currently exist. The last column is the detached condos for sale and no changes being recommended, so it's two, basically two parking spaces plus two guest spaces as they currently exist. The footnote is just basically reiterating the fact that there'll be more discussion on the mixed-use zone on October the 18th. So with that, the staffs is recommending the approval of the both resolutions, that one is dealing with the negative declaration that was put together for this update, and we didn't receive any comments during the 20-day public review period. And obviously, the resolution that includes the zoning code amendments pertaining to off-street parking loading requirements. The recommendation, again, from the planning commission will be taken forward to the city council and with the complete revised ordinance and for their final review approval and hopefully adoption later on this year and tentatively on December the 13th. That's what we're hoping for. And that pretty much concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Question, Table 1?
Yes.
What is the benefit from raising the GFA from 250 square feet to 1,000?
Is, just for sake of making it easier for clarity purposes, when, when you're talking with developers and applicants and people are comparing, you know, cities, sites, they usually, the 1,000 square feet is the standard way of approaching it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and our code right now unfortunately doesn't do justice on that because as you can see, we have 200, 200 feet, 250, 175, and it just makes it a little harder, I think. We're trying to simplify it.
So if there were something that was 750 square feet, we would play it down?
Yeah, then we would just, yeah, work the math to make it work.
On the accessible parking, could you tell me that again, or can I give you an example and you, okay.
Sure.
So we're, have a developer, he's going to build 10 two-bedroom units, and my example, and one of those units will be all tricked out for all the handicap accessible.
Okay.
So currently, there would be two parking spaces for each two-bedroom unit. So two times 10 would be 20.
Correct.
Are you saying that there will be 22 parking places?
Then it'll be the 20 regular spaces and whatever the handicap requirement, let's say it's two, then it would be additional two on top of that.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
That was what I had asked for. Commissioner Jackal, please.
Thank you. I couldn't find it anywhere. Is there now a standard for how many accessible parking places there need to be?
Yes, there is in the, the code, the existing code, there's a tabulation in terms of how many total parking spaces and then how much of that needs to be handicap accessible. So there's definitely, and the building code actually talks about that, too.
Okay.
So it is currently in our code, and it will remain. The matrix will be there, it will not be changed unless obviously the building code update requires it to, to be changed.
So just to reiterate, there would be the, the standard parking places and then on top of that, the accessible ones.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney, please.
Passing to, these policies affect any affordable housing projects?
As far as affordable housing, like in terms of density bonus type projects or, yeah, density bonus has, state law has their own requirements, parking requirements, which are lower than normal parking ratios that you see out there or like the standard parking ratios that we have in our city. So once they come in and propose a density bonus project for affordable housing, then we pretty much have to adhere to what the state requires or allows them to provide as part of their project.
City policy.
Yeah, there's, we do have a density bonus ordinance and a manual that accompanies the density bonus ordinance.
Okay, on the last chart that you...
The second part of the chart?
The one that had the green?
Oh, okay, this one?
Playing devil's advocate here. If I'm a developer and I come in and I see that I have to provide four parking spaces for a condo that's being sold versus 2.3, I'm going to build apartments because that's going to create more revenue for me as a developer. It doesn't solve any parking problems, but I think with those issues, I mean, with those ratios, I think we're going to see more con, or more apartments than condos being up for sale. I mean, I agree that we need to have more spaces, but it seems as though what I've seen in the last three to five years, more apartments are being built. We have a, no matter what management policy has been written and submitted to the city, we have more living units, we have more occupants in the living units than we do parking spaces. So that's the only concern I have.
Well, the, on that fourth column, the recommended parking ratios for apartments for rental, that would also be applicable for attached condos for sale. And although they are attached, there are some projects that we have and are currently in the pipeline where they are actually for sale, but they just happen to be attached products and they can take advantage of that lower ratio, the 2.33. So maybe it's, I don't know, best of both worlds, maybe?
Well, it's an improvement.
Yeah, for sure.
From what we have, which is good.
Exactly. Instead of having the four required, I agree.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Looney, I was just going to point out that it's for detached condos. So this would be like the small lot, single-family that's up on East Vista Way by Chow's. So it's almost a single-family neighborhood, but they're on postage stamp lots or, or they're patio homes. So I, I see it as two different markets. My question, Ms. Chow, I, I can't remember where the, how this came up, but there's been comments in, in the multifamily projects that we had before us about people, that the owners charging fees for the parking spaces.
Right.
Anything in the ordinance that prohibits that? Have we got policies that prohibit it, or is it something that we get involved in?
We have not included, there's no language currently in the draft right now that talks about not charging. But I know, as I recall from the other projects that have come before you, when the issue has been raised, the applicants obviously have clarified the fact that they would not be charging or agreed to not charge as part of a condition on the project. And certainly some are charging or will charge for above and beyond what's required, I guess, if, well, I guess if there was a third space that somebody wanted it and they would certainly charge for that. But in terms of the ordinance itself, we are not getting into the specifics of that that controls operational type charging or not charging type of situation. We're, we're, I think purposely not trying to go there.
So if it's a concern to the commission, we should address it at the project level when, when the applicants hear at their public hearing?
I would say so, unless Ms. Annie Sahar from the city attorney's office believes, otherwise I would think that that would be something that could be addressed at the project level. Yep.
Thank you.
There's agreement. All right. Thank you.
And then one last question, and, and this one may get me in trouble because it hasn't come up yet, but I was just in the Target parking lot the other day, and that, I have to tell you, that parking lot drives me nuts, the way it was designed. And I, I think I understand why it was done. I think the big box users all require a large parking field out in front of their, of their space, but I, I think we, we cause traffic problems when we don't have an efficient design of the, of the parking lot. Anything in the ordinance or the general plan policies that address that?
We, our design guidelines, not in, not in this ordinance, per se, as far as design, because on the ordinance, we're really trying to focus more in terms of the numeric and the actual ratios and the standards, the sizes of the parking spaces, et cetera. The more kind of numerical, I guess, sticking to that. But in terms of design guidelines, we, we, we generally, that's where we address these issues as far as design and location and placement of buildings and pedestrian accessibility. So that would be where we would hang our hats on.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes, there is a ballot initiative about affordable housing. I have not studied that. Chamber of Commerce is going to have someone do a presentation on all this ballot initiatives. Do you have any insight into that and how it may impact parking?
There has been, I know there's been a couple. I'm not sure if I'm familiar with the one that you were speaking of. Do you, was that something just recent?
Has to do with affordable housing and apartments, and again, I haven't studied it yet. It's a state on the, on the, on the November ballot. It's one of the 17 initiatives or ever what?
I am not familiar, I'm not sure if Ms. Sahar is aware of that one. Without, I know there's been a couple of bills that I have read, one that was vetoed by the governor related to parking, but it was mainly about on-street parking, not, not private parking, per se, or off-street. And, but no, I'm not aware of one, so, sorry, not the one that sounds like it is.
Find out tomorrow.
I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, we've got some speaker slips. First up, Michael McSweeney, please. Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor for the Building Industry Association, 9201 Spectrum Center Boulevard, Suite 110. Seven hours ago, I was on the beach in Mexico, so sunburnt, so that's why I'm not in a suit and tie tonight. Did you all read the consultant report? You know, your staff didn't want to bring forward because there's no support on council, but the consultant actually recommended lowering parking ratios. I know that I sent Director Conley the Point Loma Nazarene report to, forward to all of you, and I pretty much sing from the same sheet music every time I come to talk to you. So I want you to think back to May 24th, when we had a meeting here. We had a developer that builds multifamily housing tell you that out of three, three-bedroom units, having three parking spaces, can't make those pencil out. So if you have developers trying to meet a need for housing, and typically a three-bedroom apartment would be a family with maybe a couple of kids, maybe more than a couple of kids, how are we going to build the housing if we make the requirements so that they don't meet what the market needs to deliver? The, the people that would deliver the housing can't meet it because it doesn't pencil out. And when you read what the consultant said, they went and they studied the existing apartment complexes showing that the parking levels, there wasn't a problem. But yet we insist that we have to have more parking, more parking, more parking, but wait, we want to incentivize commercial development, so we'll lower their parking. It's the same thought process as when the city changed the traffic fees to incentivize commercial development. Well, we'll lower those and we'll make it more expensive on residential. So if, if, if this is a, a solution in search of a problem, make, make three-bedroom apartments five, 10 spaces, because nobody's going to build them. And I come to talk to you every month, and it's not just some evil rapacious developer needs to make more money. If you really want to understand the business, talk to developers. They want to bring product to the market. You talk to them, they would like to be able to produce condos at 359 to four and a quarter price point. They can't do it. The Point Loma study points out a number of those reasons why. So this is, you know, death by a thousand cuts, this is yet one more cut. And, you know, Vista's a nice town, and I don't think that, you know, following your consultant's advice would cause a problem. But right now, if you recommend to the city council and they adopt this, it's going to stifle the ability to bring three and four-bedroom type units to market. Thank you.
Teri Collins, please.
Hi, Teri Collins, 1504 Green Oak Road, Vista Community Advocate, and I'm here tonight to speak on the people who post on my Facebook page, as usual. I just, and I thank you very much for having this opportunity to speak in front of you. My concern is about the parking study that was being offered, and I just have a question. Will there be a minimum do, with the study? Is there a minimum that they have to require? So if the study says they don't have to require, can only require so much, let's say one, is there a minimum that they would have to require, or can they only go with what the study says? So that's a benefit for them to do the study because they really won't have to provide what we would prefer that they provide. Do you understand my question? So, okay, and then...
Yeah, Ms. Chow, if you understand, I didn't understand the question.
At the pleasure, I will be happy to try to address the, if I understood the question correctly, as far as the minimum, these, the proposed parking ratios are all minimum standards.
Right.
So that's typically what it is. It's not a maximum ceiling.
So if, but if there's a parking study, can the study go below the minimum?
There is no, in the parking study situation, there's not really a minimum. There is what's acknowledged or understood as to being what's, would be applicable for that type of land use, because again, the, the use can vary greatly between, you know, whether it's a location or the intensity of the use or the capacity of the, the facility, if it's a school or if it's a hospital. So, I'm sorry.
I think what she's saying is if they do a study, can they go below what's in the code?
Oh, oh, I see. Below the parking ratio in the code?
Thank you. Yes.
It could potentially ensure...
That's why I'm, that's why I'm bringing up the concern. Okay?
It could.
So that's a valid concern. And then I look forward to the meeting on the, about the multi-use family. I think it is something that we do need to address here, and it is our concern, the citizens here in Vista, it's a very great concern, so. But, but this one now brings up a new one with the parking study, reducing that. We really don't want to get lower than we already have, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Val Brown, please.
Good to see you.
Thank you. I promise no pictures and I will be brief. First of all, I wanted to say thank you, and thank you to staff for this really long, year-long process that you've been through to try and come up with something that meets a lot of different masters. To address this gentleman's comment about the apartments, I, I live next to apartments, and I was very surprised by the traffic counts for Belleterra and Sunset Springs, announcing what's happening with Avalon. As far as on-street parking, our neighborhood is wall-to-wall cars, and every morning I wake up, there are cars from the apartments on our residential streets. So I'm not really sure what the answer is to that, but I was happy to see that there wasn't a change in the multifamily. I also appreciate very much that we are going to have the opportunity to discuss the mixed-use zoning that has affected our neighborhood very directly, and I just wanted to make sure that, that the parking issue is, is front and center on that, along with the, the different uses. But I guess my question on that is, looking at the reduced numbers for office and commercial, would that affect any decision that could be made about mixed use? So the conversation that would happen on the 18th, if this were adopted with those lower numbers, those lower numbers would be applicable?
The mixed-use discussion would be separate from this, so whatever happens on the 18th or subsequent to that would be something that would, it may not have, obviously if this gets adopted or, you know, this gets set in stone or the council adopts it, again, the mixed-use discussion is separate. So whatever the ratios for, at that point, for a true mixed-use project, that would be a separate.
So when we determine like, if like, say that there was office space and mixed use, would the new standards apply to the office space or mixed use has its very own?
It would have its own.
Okay, okay, thank you for the clarification. And then I'm a little bit curious about the reduction in the... And then I'm a little bit curious about the reduction in the gym, the athletic and health clubs. Seems like a pretty significant drop in the number of spaces. We've seen what's happened to Fraser Farms parking lot since crunch has gone in. So that caught my eye and I'm not sure why that reduction is so significant and I'm just, I'm curious about that. And then the other thing, too, is with this is to look at parking enforcement. There are parking plans. How are we enforcing them? Because we can put those into the approvals of a project, but if we don't have a mechanism to enforce them, we're still going to have the same on-street parking issues, I believe. So I think that's all the comments that I have. And once again, thank you, Patsy, for all your hard work on this. And John?
Welcome.
Appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. So, Patsy, since the mixed-use is going to the council on the 18th, does that mean we're going?
Before the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There'll be an opportunity to discuss that in more detail.
Okay, so, so we, if, if the planning commission approves this, does that mean that we amend this ordinance again after the meeting on the 18th?
No, there won't be need for that because the mixed-use has its own chapter. The parking requirements are all considered under that chapter, so this will create no issues with that.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you could in fact, and hopefully move on this tonight.
Okay, thank you. So I close the public hearing for this item since I have no more speaker slips and open for commissioner discussions. Commissioner Bell.
Sounds like I missed a year and a half of fun on this one. The only question I have for the other commissioners and for the city maybe is on exhibit three, which is the count from June, it looks like. It looks like some of the apartments were counted at 100% and I would just ask, was anything taken into account for over 100%? So did they go in and see every space is occupied and that's it? Or did they actually have any way to measure overflow? Because the average here is used based on 100%, 100%, 98, 97, as opposed to 105%, 108%. And there's no right way to do that, I don't have a suggestion. I'm just asking if that was actually taken into account in these, at all, if you know.
I wouldn't be able to give you a specific answer on that because of the fact that the consultant's not here tonight, but...
I thought the percentages applied to the occupancy of those complexes at the time that they took the count. So if they were occupied at 100%, then they would assume that all the parking spaces should be filled and that's how, that's how it was evaluated. If it wasn't at 100%, then the parking shouldn't be full.
And I think the issue where we're hitting the gray area here is that if, it's fine if it's 100% full, but I think the problem is now we're looking at 105, 110% full because the neighborhoods are seeing the overflow parking. And I don't know how to measure that, I don't know how to study that. But I think that this, this average number that's shown here might be a little bit off from reality because it's not measuring every person who lives in the complex and parks either in the parking lot or outside the parking lot because of necessity. That's all I'm getting at and I don't have an answer to that, I was just pointing it out.
Anybody else have any comments or somebody want to make a motion or? We're so quiet. Commissioner Garretson?
I would move acceptance of the recommendation of staff.
Commissioner Jackal? I would second that. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none? One?
One quick note.
Commissioner Rossler?
One, one quick note. On the three-bedroom, three-spaces issue, I think it's going to depend on the design of the project. I've always felt that we have to look at the floor plan of the units. One of the smaller projects down on South Santa Fe had dual masters where the, each master suite had an in-suite bathroom and I think that's set up for two couples. And so they're going to need more parking. If it's mom and dad and two kids, then, you know, then yeah, probably three spaces are too much. But I think in the, in the market that we're seeing right now, that there are more people having roommates and it's probably justified. So anyway, just a thought.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just add my two cents is that these numbers, you know, obviously, they take into the count the need for the guest parking, so it's, it's not just that there's only two spaces that we say are needed for that particular unit, it's two spaces plus a certain amount to cover the guests.
Okay. Yep, let's vote. Let the record show that the, the two items pass with the exception of Commissioner Kramer, who disagrees. Thank you. All right, so what do we got next? Commission, staff discussion, council action and reports.
Joan Turley's requesting to speak. I wanted to let the commission know that the Breeze Hill decision that the planning commission made on the 20th of September to table the project and prepare an EIR has been appealed by the applicant to the city council, so they'll most likely go to the council in November for consideration of that appeal. On October 18th, we will have a meeting. We mentioned we'll have the mixed-use discussion item. We'll also have two other development projects for review, so we'll be sending those notices out soon. The Starbucks at Civic Center is supposed to open later this week, I believe. They had a couple delays with construction issues, but it looks like they're getting close. And the South Santa Fe building that was burned out, I don't remember the address, Commissioner Looney and I talked about it, is under construction with a brewery tasting room that they're going to be putting in that space, small space. And then I just wanted to mention on the non-conforming zoning issue that came up at the public hearing earlier tonight, we don't typically look at the use that's on the site in a non-conforming situation. We look at the zoning when we're doing our development standard reviews because the intent of the zoning is to change the use. So in this particular situation on Melrose, this is probably residential units that were built years ago before Melrose was a four, six-lane prime. When that happened, the city rezoned those properties to commercial and so the intent is to move those residential uses out and create a commercial, commercially viable site. I understand the commission's decision to put the wall in and that's great to protect the residents that are there, but the reason we don't do it at the staff level before it gets before you is for that reason. I just wanted to explain it. That's my presentation tonight.
Mr. Conley, will we be meeting on election night?
No, there will not be a meeting on election night. The councils, that would actually be a council night because we have a meeting on November 1st and that will be a meeting night. The council's moving their meeting to the 15th because they're not having a meeting on a council night, which would be our regular meeting night, so we'll only have one meeting in November and that'll be on the 1st.
Okay. Patsy, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Sahar, any comments?
No comments from our office, thank you.
Reports, comments from the commission members? I have some. I got three letters from, or excuse me, four letters from students resulting from our, what was it, September 8th meeting? The big meeting, the Breeze Hill meeting. Interesting, three of the four students commented and were a little upset by the fact that they were asked to leave the room, that they felt that they didn't know why and so it was a big, for them, it was a big discussion that they had out there. So I will put together a response and answer to that. The fourth one, who was a Rancho Buena Vista student, was commenting on, oh, excuse me, this was Creekside. "One problem that he sees is the heavy traffic. Therefore, I want to know how you plan to deal with the complaints of those already living around downtown Vista." But he goes on to say that he thought that the new apartments would make Vista look nicer, but the traffic would lend into pollution. So usually, I'll receive a couple letters a year, but to get four of them resulting from the same meeting was, was interesting. And then there was an article in the UT written by Teri Figueroa, "Condos Pitched Along Busy Road in South Vista." So can you brief a little bit what's, what's coming before us or what have? I think we've seen one, the Green Oak one?
That's what the article's about. It's the Green Oak Villas EDR, the early design review that we came before you with. I think it was at the end of the meeting on the 20th.
Okay, okay, all right. Oh, I missed that one. Okay, okay. With that said, meetings adjourned. Thank you.